So we, yeah, called meeting in order? Let's see. Yeah, six oh three. Motion for your minutes.
I'll move to approve the HEP to act you.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Want to jump into the reports if you've dug a chance to get here?
Sure.
Sure.
Capra, the only thing to report on capital projects is now, I just got word today they have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday. I haven't had a chance to look at the agenda yet, and I'll keep you posted, so I assume at some meeting we will have need, we will need people there to show up and make the pitch. I'll keep you posted.
And I'm sorry, the date of that?
The date of the town capital planning committee next meeting is next Tuesday, the 12th, at 6:00 PM. You got a frontier meeting that night, I know. We got a union meeting just before that, but...
Yep.
That's all I got.
Well, I think it's, uh, we do, uh, transform. It's a review.
Sure. Renowned singer-songwriter and storyteller Courtney Campbell visited Sunderland Elementary School on Wednesday, January 16th. This assembly was sponsored by our PTO. Ms. Campbell had been here at Sunderland around 10 years ago. She put together a captivating performance that was full of humor and highly engaging for all of our students, both teachers and students gave the performance a raving review. Ms. Campbell actually visited all of the elementary schools in our district that week. Girls on the Run, Sunderland Elementary School is looking to sponsor a Girls on the Run program for female students in grades three through five. Girls on the Run is a national program that helps to promote healthy lifestyle choices. Basically how it works, it's a 10-week, 20-session program that teaches the students about problem-solving, risk-taking, anti-bullying, all with the physical fitness incorporated into each session. Coaches are volunteer, they follow a themed curriculum, and each coach attends a five-hour training prior to the implementation of the program. And the culminating performance is a 5K. And this year, they're anticipating 80-plus schools in Western Mass being a part of this, and it will be on June 2nd at Springfield College. There is a program for sixth through eighth graders as well called Heart and Soul. And next year, we're going to be looking at putting in a district-wide program and combining the sixth graders from each of the schools because the number of participants from one single school might not be high enough with just one grade level represented. So we're very excited about that. We have a few staff members onboard to be coaches, volunteer coaches, as well as a couple of parents who are interested in helping out. Upcoming events, this coming Friday, February 8th, most of our classes will be attending Shrek Jr. at Frontier Regional. It's a musical put on by Juke Center for the Performing Arts. We have a couple of classes also going to Northfield Mountain that day. We have a kindergarten parent coffee scheduled for Tuesday, February 12th, that's next week. And then on Wednesday, February 13th, we have a, we're hosting a community appreciation luncheon for those who serve in our community. And we sent out RSVPs, or invites, and we're just, we've been collecting RSVPs over the last week and a half or so. Also, that evening on the 13th is a PTO meeting on the 15th, Friday, the 15th, Valentine's for Vets, where we send students from all four elementary schools in the district to the soldiers home in Holyoke to deliver Valentine's Day cards. And then we have February, winter break scheduled from February 18th through the 22nd. And then on March 2nd, we are planning a Read Across America Day in honor of Dr. Seuss's birthday. And each year, we bring in student athletes. In the past, we've brought in student athletes from Amherst College. And this year, we're bringing in athletes from Frontier to volunteer and read to the kids. So lots of great things happening here at Sunderland. Yeah. Any questions?
Okay, great. How'd you, uh, hook up with Girls on Run?
It's been a program that's, it's been going on for a while. And we, when I was at Deerfield Elementary School, we nursed Jean Johnson, actually, as one of the volunteer coaches. And a little while back, a Sunderland parent approached me to see if we'd sponsor a program here at Sunderland. And on my end, it was as simple as sending out an email blast to faculty and staff, and then third grade, three through five families.
That's awesome.
And, yeah, we, there's a Western Mass, a woman who's the representative for Western Mass, so she came in and met with me to discuss the program and really what it entailed. And we just got it rolling from there. So we're looking to start mid-March for it.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's great, too, because I think doing stuff like that where you're tying in educational aspects with the fitness, and boy, do kids surely more, any fitness we can get them is...
Completely agree.
Better than a lot, what a lot of them are doing, so.
Right.
Strong last goodbye.
Yeah.
You're, uh, are you all set for volunteers, or are you still looking for a few?
They, um, so they cap each program with, for 15 participants. And they just don't want the curriculum to become watered down. And they're looking for two to three coaches, and we have that covered. Now, 15 participants isn't set in stone, so if we have, you know, 16, or 17, or 18, it'll, it'll still work. But, you know, if we have a really high number of participants, we'd be looking to form two teams at Sunderland. Yeah. And parents sign up their student athletes online. Yeah.
Walked up inside darkness and... Get the location on? Yeah. Okay.
It's a financial report.
Yeah. Can we jump right into the, are you ready?
Yeah.
Jump right into the financials?
Sure.
Okay, um, plan table is a series of notes. Four is $48,601.16 for this set. So I did, at your request, only emailed the results for January. Was the exception for either of you or more?
Yeah, yeah. It'll take a while, but we're going to navigate it well, but, uh, yeah, yeah. We just want to get there.
So I also did send you a memo with some highlights of the change, things that we've done to do some budget adjustments for 2019. That $31,551 took a little digging to figure out what had happened, but it actually was a transfer that had been executed and lines of the money had been put into, the report was not picking up. So once we discovered which, we turned it on and up came those, um, up came those things. So it was salaries and it all boiled down to a certain function which was in 2357. And Desi has made some changes to the chart of accounts and how they would like us to report them. So, and with salaries for tech specialists, that was moved to line 2130, which is tech leadership and training, which is where it belongs. And then the professional development lines for both IAs and for teachers were moved to function 2356, which is professional development for staff. And it just had not picked up the landing spots. And once we fixed that, then that was fine. I also did a couple of other large-scale transfers. And again, this is from changes to the chart of accounts that the department has asked us to make and for purposes of reporting. So we had some salaries that were in function 2310 that was sort of both teacher specialists and special education teachers. They don't want regular salaries to be coded there longer, they want just like seconded things and whatnot. So they've asked us to move everything to function 230. So the 195, excuse me, $191,551 for teacher specialists moved into the same line as classroom teachers, and so it's lumped in there with that. The $141,921 for special ed teacher salaries, we created a new line within function 2305 for that money, and that money has gone there as well. We also did a journal entry adjustment to move the expenses so that they would also land in that. And from this point forward, those salaries will be charged to the proper line. So that's technical of that. We had a curriculum development stipend number that did not have a funding source, but had some money against it. We took money from curriculum supplies and materials and also some financing, some travel and the finance part to be able to bring that into balance. And then it was a stipend paid out, or stipends paid out for nature's classroom, and so we transferred a little bit from superintendent's salary and also from general textbooks, and that brings that line into balance.
Thanks, Terrence.
So. So those are sort of the highlights of what the report had to say, so.
I just want to say thank you, good, and that answers all the questions I raised.
Yes.
Thank you.
A little sleuthing, I feel like a financial forensics expert these days. A lot of digging, but that's what we find out, so. Now, I was as distressed as you were, especially when I couldn't find it at first. So I was pleased when the sudden light went on and we realized what had happened, so.
And just on the $31,000, there had been funds set aside, or?
It had, there was a withdrawal, I saw the withdrawal, but the accounts that were deposited into were not being...
We didn't see there was a deposit.
By the report.
Oh, yeah.
So it just showed as a debit and not a credit.
Got it.
Credit and not a debit is, I'm kind of, you know. So, once we realized that those had not been checked off, we checked them off, and lo and behold, they came into the report, and now it balances.
I guess I've got one other question I'll, I think now it's time to ask it. You said at the last meeting that at this meeting, you would present sort of a half-year summary of how the year was going so far.
Right.
Is that sort of taking a backseat to other stuff? Because I haven't seen it in...
Right, it's, we're gonna kind of infuse it into the discussion of the FY 20 budget because in my digging around FY 20, we've discovered some other, some other issues that we're trying to wrestle with, both in FY 19 and FY 20. So right now, the general fund looks good. Our concerns are around revolving accounts at this point in time. So that's where our focus will be in, in sort of a two-year discussion, so.
We'll get information on that tonight, or that's...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we've done, let me just take this to awards, public comment. Okay. Public, uh, likes to sign. Unfinished business, discussion items, further discussion of proposed fiscal year 20 budget.
Hot after press. So.
Thank you.
There we go. So this way, this way. So, the very first page is sort of the 30,000-foot level on the general fund. Where some of the changes have happened and why they are where they are. The budget is always a snapshot in time, so this is the snapshot we are at right at the moment. So if, just to kind of go through, you're looking at collective bargaining is up at about 10.75%, which includes step-forward movement on all salary scales, putting in a little contingency for potential cost of living adjustment as negotiations progress. We put in a placeholder, and that could change as, as the collective bargaining process continues. And then there's also been a request for an additional classroom teacher for sixth grade. So that's what comprises the bulk of, of that, those changes. In terms of non-union increases, again, we plugged in a little cost of living adjustment for those as well. Commensurate with what we're looking at for collective bargaining employees. And in one case, somebody's also getting a longevity bonus put in there. And another thing that sort of skews this number for this coming year is a change for 12-month hourly employees from 260 days to 262 days. It's a leap year, and there's one other day that gets factored in. So obviously, that's two per diem times those 12-month employees that we have to factor in. Administrative, the big news there is putting back a full-time business manager into the budget after you had pulled it out for this year. So that's what has caused that.
Should we, should I wait and ask questions after she goes through, maybe?
Yeah. I'd get an understanding of this whole front page, and then there's, there's gonna be plenty of discussion.
Yeah. Big changes in the operational side is, again, the money that you transferred from the business manager salary and put into contracted services in the business department. TMS's contract ends on July 31st, so that's why that is that huge reduction. So the two sort of counterbalance each other. Some of the numbers are a little bit skewed in terms of percentages because the number in the overall budget line is low. So for example, in psychological services, Ben has moved some money into another line, and so it looks like it's a huge reduction, but the whole psychological services line that was operational and not salary driven was only 22, 20, 2255. So that's why it looks like it's a huge decrease. It's just the way that kind of skewed. Transportation, we put in, I put in a 20% placeholder. I just did a couple of years' look back at how much transportation had increased over the years. The bus bids are due on Monday, the 11th, at the close of business. And a bid opening on Tuesday, the 12th, at 1:00 PM. And at that point, we will know whether or not that's an appropriate placeholder or if we need a different number. I'm also going to be checking in with special education transportation as well. Karen and I will work on that to try and just, again, tease out any potential decreases. Other things are reductions in licensing and things like that, just kind of some little things here and there. So the net change overall is $210,609 or 8.09% on the local side of the budget. And this doesn't talk about grants or revolving accounts or any of that business. The second page is just taking a look at the revenues that came out of the government's budget. So at the end of fiscal 19, chapter 70 was finally voted into the state budget at $867,288, excuse me. House 1 is $870,988, so that's the governor's number. It is a typical pattern for the legislature to increase that number. But for right now, if you want to play conservative and not play anything else, we should see the House's version, which is House 2 of the budget, probably sometime in March. Usually, the Senate doesn't come out with theirs until May. And then we hope that the governor signs by June 30th. Last year, he did not, so, you know, we'll have to take a hard collective breath. School choice, in the final budget for FY 19, what was voted at the legislative level was $334,592. Mid-year of the year following is always an adjustment to school choice based on the June 30th numbers. So the number you see in the House 1 number is $320,372. That's actually the number we are now operating under for FY 19. So it's a reduction even in this fiscal year of $14,000 and change.
Because of the, um, what our actual numbers were for choice and increments and things like that?
Yeah. What they do is they start with a baseline on October 1st.
Right.
They dip in again in March, and then they dip in again in June. And it's the June number and the full-time equivalent stayed in membership, not days in attendance, but days in membership in the school. And they figure all that out, and that's how that works. The December and January payments into school choice reflect the reduction. I've already seen the drops, and it's a couple hundred, a couple thousand dollars a month, that again. So they will not only reduce based on the production of the number, but they'll also make up what they may have given you in access at the beginning of the year as well. So we're starting to see that, that number, that adjusted number come in as, as that works through. Last year, you had a charge school tuition reimbursement. That's no longer there, so I'm assuming that the child is even no longer in this age range or has moved on to other, other places. So the difference in the total revenue coming in from those parts of the state is a reduction of $11,413, so. How are we doing?
Good.
All right.
Do you have any questions, do you have my first part?
Um, sure.
I guess I'd just point out that the way the town deals with the state aid in terms of how it affects passing the school budget is the school choice number matters for the school because that's considered money that's available straight to us.
Right.
The chapter 70 money matters only in a broader sense, that the more chapter 70 money, the better an argument you can make for raising, you know, for getting a budget because the state is kicking in more, but the money just goes to the town and doesn't come back onto the school accounts to be spent. Okay, so the increase, obviously, you know, it's still basically, it's a dollar for the town versus the dollar for the town. It's just slightly different feeling, you know, because we don't then take this increase of a few thousand in chapter 70 money and use it as, you know, show it as an increase in some part of our budget.
Right.
We just know that the town is getting a little more that earmarked for this school.
And in the end, it is all...
In the end, it's still a dollar for the town.
Right.
It's just psychologically slightly different.
Yeah, and we'll get to the church shoots in a moment, so. But before we get there, part of some of the reductions, and when you see the full-blown budget at the end of this packet, you'll notice percentages up and down. Two things you want to notice is the changes in the cost percentage share, both at the regional level and at the union level. You'll notice that at the regional level, your percentage is down a little bit. And again, that's happened really across the board elementary-wise. And the re, and Frontier Regional has picked up about, you know, one and three-quarters percent on the cost, on the cost share. So that's a change. When you take Frontier out and you're looking at the expenses that are only paid by the union, your percentage share has gone down just as much, but nothing that's really appreciable. But that's, again, all a part of this process as we do the district expenses.
So then 2595 down to 2584, basically, yeah. Think I mean you?
Yeah, yeah. And you see the, um, the numbers of schools at each, at each town and at the regional as well, and that's how that all gets figured out. Any questions? Okay, so now comes the dilemma part. I was looking at school choice, knowing that we have a reduction of, you know, $14,000, give or take in the upcoming, in this fiscal year, and how we would have to deal with that. And in my digging into some things, I have discovered some issues that we need to deal with. So the accounting office at the district level does a reconciliation with town accountant on final balances on all revolving accounts at the end of the year, and he has done that. So the final balance for, as of 6/30, was $122,180.49. There are some accrued payrolls from FY 18, people who get paid during the summer, but it's really FY 18, you need to subtract that from that amount. So it makes the net balance forward of $96,198.77. The anticipated revenue is the $323.72 that you just saw a little while ago. And that's, again, per the school office of finance, and that came up in late December. So when I realized what the total revenue and forward balance was versus what had been budgeted...
Correct, we've been, we've been up against this, yeah. Moving towards this day for, for multiple years.
It's what they call the funding cliff, and we are there.
Yep.
So today, we did a lot of work on trying to figure out ways to mitigate against going into deficit this year. And so we are gonna use some funds from a variety of different sources to try and offload some of those things. At the end of the day, if you look over the anticipated balance for FY 19 going into 20, it's still at a negative, but it's a negative $15,200. We are confident we can find that somewhere and deal with it. So...
Wait, so, I'm sorry, where, where is this?
It's, uh, anticipated balance...
Oh, I got it. Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. Yeah, so the anticipated revenue for FY 20, which mirrors the current reduction to school choice, so just how they do it, makes the anticipated revenue at 315. And obviously, we need to deal with the $15,200 to get that off so that we end at least even. The anticipated expenses, I carried forward when I was building the budget what was in the last school choice budget before I got into the weeds on this. So obviously, we have some work to do to figure out how we're gonna mitigate against that. We have already done some of that work. We think that there, there will probably be some personnel reductions out of this, but really, some instructional assistance. So we've done some scenario building around that. But even if we come out even this year, we're still about $105,000 that we, that we need to figure out how we're going to deal with that. And I don't have that answer for you tonight, but, you know, it obviously is something that Ben Davis and Karen and I and others who deal with this budget are gonna have to take a good, hard look at, is how are we going to deal with this particular deficit issue? If you look over on the right-hand side, the little box, I did some digging into the back because I, I, Davis and I were scratching our heads about how did we get here? So we did some digging back. In FY 18, the school choice number was $390,518. The FY 19 number is...
You're saying the revenue, or like the...
Yes.
Yeah.
And if you see that FY 19 number, that $334,592, that was actually one of those adjustments. And what we found was that adjustment was never made.
Wait, so you're saying...
That adjustment was never made by...
The $334,592...
By whom?
I don't know.
No, I mean, was that a...
By the business office.
Yeah, by the business office.
It was a problem within the school district, or was it a problem at the state level?
No, it was a problem within the...
No, it was air-made within the business office.
That's where I was thinking.
If the budget that was brought forward did not pick up the December new number, which were lower... which was lower.
Right.
And so, we were using?
The 390 instead of the 334.
The 334.
So, that's part of the problem. So, that left, and if you notice, the change from '18 to '19 is a $56,000 reduction. You add the latest $14,220 on top of that, you wind up with a total reduction in school choice over two years of $70,146. That's basically why we're where we are right now. So, as best as I can tell.
I mean, that's it, yeah. It's even, it's more than, it's a little more than that because in, in a sense, I mean, we, you know, we would prefer not to be cutting it anywhere nearly this close anyway, even without that, so.
Right.
Is there, I mean, I look at this and I say our, sorry, the money we get from school choice is, it's the $5,000 per kid plus the spending increment.
Right.
Okay. And I think, without having firm numbers in front of me, that our kid count over the time period shown, shown in this little box is pretty stable.
No, I think what I, what I'm surmising is that we've had kids move on to Frontier. So, obviously.
So, we've, we've, we've had kids move on to Frontier, but we've advertised openings and we've taken some in because our, our kid count right now is, what, 42, I think, for school choice? And my, I'm just saying, this is my sense without, I should have the data, but I don't, okay? Is that very little of that change, in particular, what I'm looking at is the downward change is from a loss of body count. Okay? And since the only other aspect of it is the spending increment, then the question is, has there been a significant decrease in the obligations we've had for the school choice students for spending services? And I'm thinking there must have been because that's, that's the only way I get such a big decrease. And if there has been, yet we haven't in the budget reflected the, uh, you know, less demand, less need for those services for that school choice population. I'm, I'm just trying to think, how does this number drop so much?
The 40?
And I, and I don't see how it's done it to a kid count.
Well, there have been a lot, there has been a loss of some students.
The choice, I mean, I don't know what our final number is going to be as like kind of with the state, but, I mean, FY18, it was 41. We're at 42 right now, so.
Right.
I mean, FY17, it was 46. I mean, these are my, I think my numbers are, I don't know if they're the exact state numbers or they're like off our October 1st, but.
Right. But you also have to remember that it could be a body count, but it depends on when the kid joins or leaves.
I get it, yeah.
So, it's an FTE.
And I know there's an FTE thing, but I'm just saying ballparking, it's not like we've had like a dramatic reduction in the school choice numbers.
At the start of the 2015, 2016 school year, we had 43 school choice students.
How about which year?
Uh, 2015, 2016. Yeah, I can pull up the other numbers.
Yep, yep. Forty-three, right. And then 46, 41, 42. I mean, we're in that kind of.
Right. But that's not a, that doesn't get you a.
Exactly, yes.
That doesn't get you a decrease from 390 to 3 and a quarter.
And that's off the Division of Local Services, so it's.
Right. But the only other, the only other thing that goes into that number, if I'm not mistaken, is the spending.
The spending for it, yes, correct.
Okay? Which is determined based on the agreed-upon spending services identified in the IEPs or?
And that would also be done by FTE.
Right.
So, it's, again, it's a wiggly number.
It's a good transition sentence because Cevie and I use.
I figure, I, I have to do a good contrast of it.
For those who don't know Karen, so I asked Karen to come on tonight. Karen volunteered to come tonight to, you know, give us her thoughts on this because it is all, all these numbers are all tied together. And so, Karen, you can either pull your seat forward.
I don't want to sit over there.
You can, you know, just so people, you don't have to touch your back.
First, I'd just like to say one of the reasons I was coming here today, early on, when I realized I was going to come is to just really be able to update and partake in the conversation regarding the special education revolving account. And your quest, and then when we started to recognize the school choice deficits, it was clear that I would have to get in, just involved in the conversation, just as your question, Peter, it comes up. I did pull the numbers as far as each student and then took a look at it. So, fiscal year '18, when I look at the final report for school choice for fiscal year '18, it had 47 students. Ten of them were sixth graders. And this year you only brought in five kindergartners. Okay? So, last year you had 10 sixth-grade school choice students and you brought in five kindergartners. And the number I saw when I went, Judy, into the actual roster for the October 1st preliminary, did they give you the preliminary results in December, showed 40 students. So, two things happened. You did drop by a significant number of students, but yes, as far as Peter's question, I could say that there were students within that 10 students that moved out of Sunderland and which the increment was, be higher than the kindergartners that you brought in now as it stands.
Because, you know, it's like 20, what is it now? What is it now, 50, 500?
No, it's 5,000.
Still 5,000.
5,000 right there.
So, 25,000 there and then, and then, yeah.
And then if they have any special education needs or could have.
Could have been.
And I don't foresee it going up that much, but the question is, right, so when they're predicting, a lot of times your sixth graders already have their IEPs written and whatnot. So, when you bring in the kindergartners, you have that child fine yet, so you don't really have that IEP written.
Right, yeah.
So, you have that going out. So, certainly, it's a combination between the number of students and the increments that you get back for your special education students. The other thing is we do have a significant increase in needs in preschool and in kindergarten at this time. So, when you're really looking at where did that, where did those services come, you're right, we did not have the cuts, even though the sixth graders were moving out.
Right. So, the spending services were transferred over to non-school choice.
Right.
Absolutely.
And so, we're very mindful of the number of students who we accepted for school choice and then also anticipating move-ins from that April meeting to the start of school, which happens every year as well. You know, at, when we voted for school choice openings, when we vote for school choice openings in April, we look at the number of in-town commitments, if you will, siblings of school choice students in upper grades and then try to figure out how many we can accept to fill, to fill the classes, yet not accept so many that if we do get move-ins from April to the start of school, that the kindergarten class size would be too high. And we've had years where, we've had eight students move into town at one grade level and sometimes zero. So, it's just somewhat of a guessing game.
So, I just put in the cherry sheets. They've come lately highlighted in blue, but for those of you who don't have the history of cherry sheets, the reason why they're called cherry sheets is back in the day when they mailed them to us, they were on cherry pink paper. So, changed them to cherry, just to be reminiscent of the history.
We appreciate that.
So, again, this gives you the full, because as you noted earlier, Peter, it is all one big bucket at the end of the day. So, this gives you the full receipts for both education and general government on page five. And then page six shows what they call the assessments that happened to the town. And at the bottom of the assess, of the assessment, you can see the school choice sending tuition. And here's another number that, I think this is like a throw it up from the bottom of the white stuff. A school choice sending tuition in FY19's cherry, cherry sheet estimate was $53,600. The governor's proposal says $69,000. So, there's a little more going out.
Do you know if that's, is that, at this level, is this all elementary or could be both?
Yeah, because the regional, it's.
The elementary.
Yeah, it's self-contained.
Okay, right, okay.
You'll notice that there was, however, again, that charter school sending tuition that there was that routine reimbursement for, that's not going out either. So, the town has, you know, reaped the benefit of that. So, um, so the subtotal for tuition assessments up a little bit, but not significant. And it was the, the loss of the charter school student that sort of offset the school choice. So.
Good to have some good news.
I know. I really feel like there are dead titles and I apologize, but.
But do, can I just go back? I got one more question about the school choice before I forget it. And that is that I was under the impression that at some point during the annual cycle, we got a school choice number that for this coming budget year that knows which kids we're going to be losing because they're graduating out of sixth grade, but it doesn't know which, what school choice kids we may be adding.
Right. Or doesn't know who you might lose case for six either because somebody makes a choice to go back to home district or elsewhere.
Agreed. But it does, they already know who's going to be leaving because they're graduating out.
Correct.
Okay? The others are unknown, but one would think there would be a bias to adding rather than subtracting because we'll be out recruiting a few probably. I'm just saying. Okay? My, my impression was, or my understanding was that then at some point in this whole annual process, you then get a recalculation by the state that, you know, looks at who actually showed up in the fall and how many you've got. It includes new arrivals and kindergarten or wherever.
And that's what.
And then that, and then that gives you a new school choice number from the state.
And that's what the December number is.
So, you put your October reports, call the October 1 report, right until the end of October to get it submitted.
Right.
Yeah.
And then takes them to December to spit it back out to you.
Okay. But then, is the school choice number, we get, the school choice amount that we get for revenue for FY20 based on our FY19 school choice experience?
Yeah, the adjusted number. They basically take that December adjusted number and they carry it forward to the.
So, that if we were to get 10 more kindergartners or whatever grade show up first of September next year, that does us no good on a budget basis until FY21?
It would, in the December adjustment, you would know that and they would adjust up, but.
Would it affect the, would it affect the FY20 stating number?
Yes, absolutely. It could make.
That could save the budget. That's what you were trying to say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we won't know that until we know who shows up.
Can't budget on what you don't know.
Correct, correct.
So, that, one of the reasons that we are where we are with the school choice is because that number in October was not as good as we might have hoped or not as big as I hope. And therefore, everything gets adjusted down.
Correct.
But we're doing two years of adjusted down.
And you're doing two years of adjusted down. So, either way, it's magnified.
Yeah.
Correct.
It's magnified. If you happen to be going up, it's magnified the same way because they adjust.
Right.
The current year and the future year.
Right.
And this is, for those listening, this is the danger of having your budget operating off of live school choice year to year. And that's why the early practice was, it was a year and a year. You didn't touch the money unless you had to.
Right.
And through tougher times, you start to slowly pick away at it. And someone has picked away at it and now uses it as part of its operation budget.
Right. And then the other.
And it's a dangerous area to be in.
And then the other factor here is a question of whether figures that we were getting at some point in the recent past were in fact not accurate.
Correct.
Because I looked at what I'd seen on what is now the current situation and said, how can that be when numbers that I was looking at not too many months ago were significantly better? And it was just that they hadn't been adjusted correctly.
That's correct. That's what I finally found.
Those numbers, I mean, the only thing I'd say to that is, it's true, but those numbers weren't great. As you were just saying, we weren't a whole year and rares. But we weren't at the, at the cliff's edge.
Well, we were at the cliff's edge, but we, now we're underwater.
Right.
But you're, you're being conservative enough for a few kids to move in and out without having to touch your bottom line.
Right, right.
And so, I mean, so you, clearly, the next question is, well, what do we, you know, what about these numbers? What are we doing? So, I, you know, I am having our auditor come and look at, we look at, I talked to Tom Scanlon and we played for him tag days. I've confirmed this up, but he's offered to come in and take a look at, kind of prove our numbers for previous years and to make sure that all of what we should have is correct. Because if you're looking at this, obviously, there's going to be a lot of adjustments that will affect, you know, could affect programming and that.
And, and we have to be able to explain clearly and accurately, okay, what is going on, why it's happened, where we are, where we are, and what the implications are. Okay? Because, you know, I mean, I look at these numbers and these are not numbers that people are going to say, whoopee, yeah, great, you know, whatever you need, you know, have at it. And so, you know, explaining it well doesn't get you any more money. But explaining it well is part of the process that has to be done.
Right.
And the other part, which is how we deal with it is, wow, lousy.
I mean, there is a.
I haven't slept a little bit past the limit.
No, I, I've, yeah, I've been unhappy too. So, I've, I've seen, I've known this was coming and it's just worse than, you know, that.
Yeah. When I realized what had happened.
It's way worse than I thought.
And it was actually something Karen said to me today and I went, hmm, let me do a little more digging. And when I realized, and then when I touched base with Darius and realized what we thought had happened was that that adjustment was not made last year. And then you've got another adjustment that we now have to deal with.
But you're actually, you're actually straight with the town accountant as far as?
Yes.
The money that we have in that special revenue account is what it's supposed to be?
Yes.
And it ties in with your figures?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, the other piece of this story, I mean, there is that, is a, a important piece of what we're dealing with that, I bet. Again, like, we've been talking about for a number of years now about this process and trying to move away from it and talking with the select board and they know they're well aware of this. We've been talking about it. It's why we've been pushing, you know, for the override that was passed last year. The other piece of this is we're going to probably go up in enrollment next year again by somewhat because the total in the sixth grade is 21. And we've got 23 resident pre-K right now in the school. And that doesn't include people who are pre-K. Now, maybe not all, I guess not all of those are going.
Pre-K, there's 200 of them, but.
Right?
So, your pre-K numbers going two years.
Two, two years, two sessions, yeah.
So, we have to get a look at the number. So, then I'll task you to bring me, bring us the numbers for.
But the anticipation I gathered was that we were going to be two classes.
K-1 registration's taking place.
Actual teacher.
That's it.
K-1 registration.
Which means less school choice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably more school choice because there's three in the, in there right now in the sixth grade. I'm guessing if we go, assuming that we're adding that teacher, we have two classrooms, that we would be somewhere in that five range again that would be our target. I'm just, again, it's pretty speculative at this point, but based on past, I would guess that we would be in that five range again for kindergarten classes. I wouldn't expect it to be less than that, but I guess it just depends on how many we think are going to show up.
So, where we're at is obviously that, that number is 8%.
Yep.
Got to show it to you.
Yep.
You know, you know, we have to kind of go back and see what can, scenarios of what can be reduced. You know, first, you know, obviously, first thing we have to double check to make sure all the numbers moving on the, on these papers are correct. Because of, it's taking over, looking at multiple budgets because of carryover, that's why I say we're going to have somebody else come in and take a look at that. So, that's kind of step one. So, as soon as we establish that those numbers are correct. So that's kind of step one, so as soon as we establish that those numbers are correct, then we have to look at, how do we bring that percentage down? And that's gonna be some tough conversations that Ben and I will have to have. And, because you have to look at, how do you use without affecting program?
Well, wait, I mean, there's a number, you know, things that I think would be good to like have clarity and as we're talking about this too with the select board and ourselves, but, so so the change that we're, that for that, with that eight percent, what's the change that we would put in from school choice in FY nineteen versus what we're planning with this plan to do in twenty? So how much of, how much of it is that adjustment? There's a, how much is the, another teacher?
Each, so each percentage point is just around twenty-six thousand?
Yep, yep.
It's around twenty-six thousand, so.
The teachers, the teachers.
The teachers, you know.
In this, it's probably two percentage points.
Is two, is, yeah, is two percentage points.
Right.
So that's where that was, I mean, we kind of looked at it before, based on what we were looking at this year, based on your, your, your average step increases, this before, we're, no bargaining, so that's not out there.
Right.
And again, transportation being, is out there as well, but if everything kind of came in as normal, before we were at the teacher, we were at three or four percent.
Right.
And then you add the teacher, we were gonna be at six or seven percent in a normal budget or without the school choice issue.
Right.
And so now you put that on top, that's what's kind of growing us forward, so we were already coming in this year with a with a hot budget that we were gonna have to kind of, kind of work through, and now we're coming through with, you know, clearly something that's gonna have to be adjusted.
When you've got your numbers on the page on school choice and it comes down to what you got there with a negative number of hundred and twenty thousand.
Right.
Which would be, intent was to at least get that up to zero.
Right.
In the.
Wait, the negative hundred and twenty?
Yeah, it's based on that five thousand, so basically it would come up to about a hundred and five. And the calculation on the very last page actually shows you the real number if we got rid of that five thousand dollars, so it's about a hundred and five, six, eighty-three, that would be the deficit number.
Okay, but, but in trying to, in needing to take care of that, at this point, does that include any reductions in age or anything like that, or is that just the way it is?
It is looking at the potential of reducing.
So that's already built into getting to the minus hundred and five?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's also, that was put in because of, we reduced the amount because of some of the special needs changes of students who are aging out.
Right, right, but, but it's still, you basically got a good sized number on the front pit, you know, out front, and then you've got more here that's screaming for the same set of cuts, you know, so you won't, it's gonna like, I just wanna make sure people realize that you gotta sort of add these two together to realize how big the problem is.
Correct, so you're looking at, and again, if you're using those percentage point numbers, which obviously change the larger it gets, but still you're talking about closer to eleven to twelve percent.
Well, the hundred and five is like another four percent, and so four plus eight, that's twelve percent right there.
That's why I said eleven, twelve, so, yeah, that's, you know, that's the real, that's really where we're at, but, so you know, part of looking at this is maybe we're gonna have to look at what we can do currently. And, you know, again, and looking at what some of those options are. We haven't had a lot of time to, we've been, when this was kind of brought, you know, you know, two days ago, when, when this was kind of brought as a, this is where we're, oh, and then more ohs, it was kind of more trying to double check the numbers rather than going to solutions at that point, because it was this, I'll be honest with you, this can't be true.
Right.
You know, they can't have these, can't have this, then this, and then this, I mean, that's not a.
And the whole weekend I went digging
Right.
for, for where, where was the problem, and then today, that, that whole business of the reduction from the ninety to three thirty-four was what the tipping point was, and what made.
So when you're, when you're saying one of the places you'd be looking at would be current year, that's because basically that if anything that you could save in the current year would, could be taken out of the school choice expenses for the current year, which would leave more money carried over to next year.
Correct, but right now, we're in, right now, we have to fix the five thousand that's in the current year.
Right.
So we already have to do that, and we've already, that number was higher, we've already corrected that before today. So that number was close to fifty thousand, we've already spent, that's what we spent, I think, from, you know, eleven to two kind of working on.
You could think of putting a few more hours.
Yeah, exactly.
Sixteen thousand an hour, okay, so you could collect it for another twenty-four hours, you see all that?
I wish that was the.
Oh, why?
I mean, it's not a laughing matter, I mean, I mean, this is.
See the laugh or cry?
Yeah, you gotta laugh or cry, Chris.
Just to make sure I'm like, I just wanted like that, one twenty-two, one eighty wasn't it, six thirty eighteen, the five, one ninety-four is kind of projected six thirty nineteen, and then the minus one twenty, we didn't change anything.
Right.
We'd be where we would be at six thirty twenty.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
That actually includes reduction of two IAs.
Yeah.
Already.
Already.
Which you could argue would be planned on anyway due to the reduction in needs, the service.
Yeah. Okay, so, sweet.
We, we are hit by a few things, a couple of buried monsters popped up. This feels like, as far as a percentage increase in a year, like an excursion from what we should expect long-term. So, I mean, we have to build a budget that is not reliance on school choice.
Right.
And the needs of the students in Sunderland are not going down, they're going up.
Right.
And so, you know, when I say needs, you know, IEPs and the plans and what they, the services that they're needing, you know, it's not like we're seeing an increase, in fact, we're actually seeing, we're seeing across the district, there's an increase of younger kids with more, more difficulties, and so that's gonna be an ongoing cost that I don't, you know, is not, and so with that, and that's kind of what we kind of threw school choice at and, you know, spend revolving, which, you know, I mean, Karen can jump back in at any point, but instead revolving, okay, again, is, I can't Karen explain what's been revolving is, is in a nutshell, but, but she's been off, it's not her money, but she's, you know, she orchestrates it, offsetting a lot of other costs in this building with that money, but then this year we reached a point where it overextended, we used everything we could to keep down that budget. And so then when you lose some students that were either placed in through the Horizons program or choiced in, and we lose those, those are, those are, everything kind of, you know, everybody hates the term perfect storm, but there is, there are multiple things that hit the same year that we probably could have dodged if only one thing hit, but because we hit multiple things, that's not, it's not making our life easier.
Yeah, and the long-term trend is, as the town population grows and the building stays the same size, there's less space available for choice, so we're seeing that the number of slots available ramp down over time slowly.
I think it's, yeah, it's important to note that the positions that are supported through school choice and revolving accounts would be needed to support just the Sunderland residents.
Well, yeah.
Right, so these positions.
That's, that's important, yeah, that's important.
Are, are being created because we're bringing out of town residents in.
Right, that's kind of where I just wanna not, I wanna survive two thousand twenty, but I don't wanna push the panic button too early, because if kids choice out, then that, that's a whole other set of money that, you know, the town has to pay for.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I propose, we're gonna need another meeting prior to our budget meeting. And where we're at there, we probably, we, I mean, we try to have communication with finance committee as well, either invite them to that meeting, so at least one of them to that meeting, so that they can give us where the town is, because this number can come down, but it's still gonna be, it's still gonna be a reach year as proposed to a comfortable year. Wow, that's a nice, a nice way to put that, huh? But, but I, anyway, I'd like to have them at the table sooner than later, so they can give their thoughts of what's nearly realistic and, you know, that kind of, and I don't even, you know, talk about how we do it yet until we know what that number is.
Do we have, do you wanna talk at all this evening about this couple revolving funds, the early childhood and the what it does for Horizon, Horizons in terms of, where they stand in terms of, because we've taken money out, you know, I mean, money, we got revenue, I mean, put it this way, you've got, a budget is not just a set of expenditures, it's also a set of revenues. Most revenues we can't influence, some revenues we can. So we need to make sure that we're, you know, if there are places where we can close the gap by increasing revenues, that's a dollar saved there, it's just as a good, you know, it's also a dollar, you know.
And so what, and so we've already started going after those numbers
Right.
to offset this year, and the, within this discovery of, of the school choice, we've looked at that, the early childhood revenue and used some of that, we used some grant things that are usually used on supplemental things for the school, we used some of that, and tried to take from different places so that we would not hurt one, one area. And the third spot was special ed open there, summer services, and these kind of things around, so there's, there's a lot of things kind of in motion, so, I mean, we can talk about, I mean, we can talk about those numbers, but I would just be careful when we talk about solving this problem in an open meeting, because people's lives are connected to different things, and so if, you know, we said, oh, it's just, you know, if one of us was to say in it, like, let's combine tenth, eleventh grade, I'll use the grades that don't exist, and that gets up, then also that becomes a rumor, hey, they were talking about that, and then it kind of gets into a life of its own, so I just wanna be careful. I think it's, at this stage, it's best, and by all means, I'll take input from school committee members outside of the public meeting on areas, you know, thoughts and that kind of stuff, but I just, I guess it's one thing that you wanna make sure you keep a a school culture strong and moving forward and not worry, it's for our jobs to worry about this right now, it's not for them to worry about that, if we talk about those things, they're not worried about it, you know, that's, that, if that makes sense. But, so, you know, I'll definitely take your, I'll be your ear on any kind of ideas you have.
Yeah, I just thinking in general, you know, one of the things we used to do with the town budget, okay, would be to go through all the little places that the town charges fees, the town, you know, basically has as revenue sources that aren't just controlled by the state
Right.
or law or whatever, okay, and look at them and say, whoa, how many years has it been since we changed this?
Right.
You know, what's the market, what's the market for this now, you know, is our fee is reasonable compared to, you know, or maybe they need to be caught up, I'm just saying, I'm not as familiar with the school as I am with some of those things, but I know as long as those things exist, they need to be reviewed in a time when you've got a, you know, budget crisis is as good a time as any to take another look.
I would say everyone's gonna go through, I would also say that there is not a lot of pork in Sunderland's budget.
Oh, I.
And so, because of, you know, because of the history, not too long ago, they stripped it down at that point, and it takes, it takes years to put pork, takes years to put that out. But, and even then, when you people call it that, it's, you know, those are, you know, some of those things are, you know, it'll affect programming, they all affect programming, there's nothing really in there that.
Right, yeah. Have we got, I know there's, I just talk in general terms here, I know there's been, you know, there will be changes in the Horizon program just because of students moving in or out or something like that, uh, I guess, you know, that can be in the state of flux for some time, because that's for next year and who knows?
Just like the school choice numbers could change, tuition to specialized programs could change, you know, and again, we can't, if we had something that was on the rails where we thought that was going to happen, and we felt strong about it, we would probably put it into the budget as a possibility. And those things change from, and Karen's sitting there, so, who has a hand on that kind of thing, it changes from month to month.
Right.
And it's, you know, until we get it, you know, until things are solid, so there are some things that could happen that could very much send us in a, in a better direction. But a lot of things have to line up, and a lot of things that we have no control over, you know, and just as things could line up that way, you could also have a family moving to town that has significant needs and that we have to meet those needs that have a, have a price tag to, so, you know, with each one, so there's a, you know, a little bit of, I mean, there's no praying in school, but there's a little bit of praying going on. You know, get lucky in our way.
The school choice number really hurts.
I offered to bring my stage piano, go sit on the street with a tip jar.
Yeah.
So
So we're gonna schedule another meeting.
Yeah.
We need to schedule another meeting.
So, you'll need some time to
Yes.
put this stuff together.
Well, we're obviously not next week, and then we've got vacation week, so I think the realistic first week to look at would be the week of the twenty-fifth, and.
I said Wednesday, Thursday?
It's a good weekend since there's no school days that week, so.
So it wasn't.
Thursday would be better.
Thursday, Thursday the twenty-eighth?
It's terrible.
Terrible.
I could make the twenty.
Twenty-seventh? How do you, do you feel about the twenty-seventh, Wednesday?
Twenty-seventh? Six P M?
Six P M, work for everybody?
Yep.
I hope you're busy. No, not that, not that. What's, we said six?
We said four. I'll make that one.
Thank you. So, I mean, I mean, we know this, uh, um, you know, obviously the school choice is a huge driver in this.
But we've been trying to get off of it for years.
Right, but it would be like that, uh, that last page, I mean, I guess we can pull it from other, from previous budgets, but some of that, like, kind of the, the sources and uses things from the different things, the different ones, so like, on the.
Yeah, because really what you're doing is comparing blue column to blue column, because that's the local budget, the peak and the middle sort of shows what a total is, and when you see off to the right, what's offsetting, to create that gray hand blue column.
Right. All fund, right, so the all fund really gives the total cost of that line item.
And then when you get to the blue, uh, thing, for example, if you look on, on the education, which is obviously going to happen on the farm tourism, so, for the example, if you look on picture eleven, you can see that, for example, classroom assistance truly costs four hundred and three thousand nine forty, the system's twenty-four thirty.
Yep.
But the net cost to the local budget is one forty-six, three six eight, seventy, three seventy-eight because there's sixty-nine thousand coming out of school choice. So you can see that sort of offset, just in that one line, if you look at classroom assistance, I'm not looking at the total, let's see.
Instructional assistance, oh, oh, the top, the top one of it.
And then here's the net, because this comes off of here.
Of choice, right, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
And the next one, yeah, and the next one here, you can see some school choice and some bed revolving, so you can see where the various sources are that are offsetting, so it just gives a more, a clearer picture of where it's coming from.
And then what helps too, when we're looking at this, is like, okay, so our, our total cost, say, cost, say, instructional assistance is five seventy-two and, and that we're projecting for F Y twenty. What was it in, um, you know, F Y nineteen, F Y eighteen? You know, and why the difference in that total cost? And then on the revenue side, you know, what else is happening? There's, there's things happening on the cost side that we need, we need more in certain, certain years, less in certain years, and there's things happening on the revenue side. We can't keep kicking it out of school choice, um, so it's, you know, we're asking for it out of the, the general fund.
Yeah, thank, so, um, I would have to back into those numbers for part of fiscal years because that's not how the budget is.
I mean, we can pull it off our sheets too for prior years, but, like, and it doesn't, we don't need to go back more than a year or two, but.
It does, it starts not to be relevant, especially.
As you get too far.
Unless you have questions based on, you know, were you currently using staffing for?
Well, even just.
Needs, going back and looking at what other ones are, those needs and those.
Change, it's hard to go back. From, from last year, you know, this year, like, if, you know, are we changing that? And if so, why? Um, you know, on that cost side and then what's happening on that? Cause I, yeah, the question will come up.
Do you have anything we've got on the agenda to rest in report?
I was gonna say, uh, yeah, superintendent for it, and I guess we'll, uh, invite the finance committee to this next, or ask someone from the finance committee if they care to attend the next meeting on the.
I'll certainly, I'll certainly go via a selectman meeting and inform them of the meeting scheduled for Wednesday, the twenty-seventh and advise, uh, and, you know, these days, there's, the chair of the finance committee is usually at their meetings because they're doing budget hearings for the town. So I'll go, I'll go to the next meeting and invite them if I can. And obviously, I guess at some point, we're supposed to show up at their place too for.
Yeah, we're still trying to, we're trying to work that out, but at this point, you know.
I mean, I.
I mean, usually that is in March, you know.
And I will tell them perhaps with not many details that we have a significant challenge ahead of us.
Yeah.
So on, because they're gonna know and it's, you know.
All right, so you'll take care of that, so I don't have to, I can also send an email if you want.
Um, why don't you send a one anyway and I'll just stop by and, you know, check in. I, I usually, I mean, I'll go by town hall tomorrow, but, uh, it's, uh, an email for you would be good too.
Yep. All right.
This is, just again, I'm making sure I'm definitely right. This is with ending school choice at negative one oh five, which we can't do.
So, well, that's snapshot at the moment.
Yeah, okay.
You know, again, we keep it up to date about when meetings are happening for negotiations, so you can see at the top, um, we have, um, I have information tonight if you wanna go to executive session to talk about how things are going there, um, just with the IAs, um, at this point, but if you want five minutes to do that, we can certainly do that. Um, nothing profound, but certainly information, meaning that we've exchanged some, um, some ideas and that kind of thing, so there's information. Um, school bus contractors out, as Judy mentioned earlier. I did some handouts of the rural aid, it's just kind of an FYI as you're, um, learning about the different politics that are going on right now. Um, as you know, um, last time we went after the rural aid from the state, you know, it started out at, at nine million and came back at one point five million and the entire district, Sunderland was the only one to receive money, that's forty-eight hundred dollars. So, um, you know, there were some, there were some big, there were some winners and there were some big losers and, um, you know, they're trying to look at, looking with, if you look at the handout I gave you and also included an email that kind of, um, um, that kind of goes through what some of the new proposals are because there are communities around us that are far worse economically, they got no money in considered rural aid. You know, you look up at Montague and, um, U. Turners and Greenfield and they had no money out of that and then some of these other, you know, they're not really rural, but they're, you know, Western Mass kind of, I think, so they're kind of showing what the Wisconsin model did and then there's projected numbers if they follow the Wisconsin model. So, I don't know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk going on about it. I don't have a lot of faith in it, um, changing, but, you know, but then I'm in a pessimistic week, so maybe I should be more in an optimist, optimistic mood. Um, and, um, so, yeah, so we can see what happens and then, and even within the chapter, the chapter seventy, there's a lot of talk about changing that formula. There are some models where, um, you know, Sunderland has some winning models where they do a little bit better. Um, we just, and I, again, I'm talking as, when, I continually talk about all the schools as all the schools as a whole, um, Sunderland, in many of these scenarios, are the only winner in, in, in getting some money, meaning that the other, you know, a lot of the scenarios are gonna change all the chapter seventy around and, um, three of our communities aren't gonna be affected at all by it. So, um, and again, that has to do with, um, income levels of the, of the towns. Um, the informational school choice, we just threw that on there, we gotta vote that at the next, and not the next meeting, but I'll save that to the March media agenda. So the next meeting agenda will be strictly budget unless the chair wants to throw something else on that, um, to that. Um, the business manager position was posted on, um, last week and, um, you know, the, the timeline is to post it through this month, do kind of the end of process through the month of, um, March and then the April, the April joint meeting, you know, have a decision where we're going to go there. Um, you know, I know it's awkward with Judy staying here, but I've had conversations with Judy, she's working very hard and, um, that's just the way that we are. Um, but that was for everybody else, I know, I know you and I. Um, so that's kind of, uh, that is my.
All this in front for a reason, so, okay.
That's my, oh, um, I also handed out the profit loss statement for the cafeteria. We had promised just to, I forget if it was this committee or another committee, that we were gonna look at all expenses toward the cafeteria. We haven't had a chance to do that in the, in the past two weeks. Um, I wasn't going to throw that in Judy's desk for the past two weeks to get what is insurance costs and all the other broken out, so, it's, I haven't left my radar, but I still wanna, I had this information, I wanna keep you up to date that we are in a good place there. So, so that's it, that's a good spot, so, um, that's where I'm.
Can I just say, I'd like to thank Judy because, um, you've been very responsive tonight. I know you've put a lot of work into this recently, but it's, you know, I, I've been sitting here saying, okay, she's on top of this now and that's, you've got real problems, but I'm really glad to see that you've, you know, I feel like.
I got my sea legs now.
You got your sea legs and, and the responses have been sharp and appreciated and thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And like I say, it's been a, it's a giant jigsaw puzzle in finding all of the pieces, um, which, you know, part of how we build our budgets at TMS is we have a, a very complex workbook with several tabs, so everything lives in one place. I'm not trying to figure out where information sits. It just makes our lives a lot easier, so, um, you know, the build has taken a long time and then, of course, over the weekend when I discovered this other issue and then tried to dig.
Thank you.
You know, so, people, I, and I do have to say that people in the district, the accounting office has been wonderfully helpful. Karen's been wonderfully helpful, Louise, everybody. Darius has been very helpful. When I don't, when I can't figure out what the puzzle pieces are, I ask the question and, you know, people are very willing to help, so that's been the team, you know, so that's why we've done. Ben's been helpful, you know, trying to scratch my head.
Are you looking for both new journey?
Yeah. I don't feel, when you talk, I mean, the other option is executive session. It's, um, you know, you could hold off, you know, we could put it on the next one with your budget and this on the next one because at that point, I believe we'll have a hell of a meeting with the teachers and there won't be a whole lot of movement on the other one. Maybe a little bit, but there's not, again. Most of the agenda.
Go move.
Second, all in favor?